Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
All right, there is a quarrel present, so we can proceed with the meeting. And the first item on our agenda tonight is we'll need a recommendation to accept the board agenda. Say, that motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion about the board agenda? All right, not all those in favor say aye. Opposed? And it is approved. First is the consent agenda, so the motion to approve the consent agenda. Our motion has been made and seconded. There's no discussion on that, so it is approved. Delegations tonight, I know we don't have many peers to be in the room, and you go up, so we'll move on to our spotlights. And we do have a spotlight tonight, a special guest if we want to celebrate something good going on in our school system. Troy, I'll have you introduce them.
Well, as I shared in your board packet, a few months ago, I solicited feedback from all the principals if they had anything that they would like to be recognized at a subsequent monthly board meeting. And Mr. Tommy Kirk had shared with me the work that his librarian at the middle school, Ms. Karen Callis, had done. And what Ms. Callis is going to share with you tonight is how she has utilized the virtual setting in a more productive way since some of the kids are quarantined or home, for homeschooling or virtual school, and made more versatile where the kids can be actively engaged in more reading. So I'm not going to give all the narrative because I'd rather her do it. She's provided us a PowerPoint tonight, and also she's here to present. So as she presents, if you have any questions or comments, I'm sure she'd be glad to respond. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. I'm going to step right into if you don't mind. But the library at the middle school is a fun and exciting place. We have lots of innovative programs. And at the end of last year, right before quarantine, I was awarded Tennessee Library Association Award, the Louise Meredith School Library Media Award for unique and merly contributions to our school instructional program, community, and professional landscape through different school library media services. That was awarded to me at the conference due to COVID. So I got this in the mail in the fall and wanted to share that with you because we try to reach all kids and all teachers in very unique and exciting ways, some of which include the Xbox or the stop-motion animation videos or whatever. So this year, our big challenge was we have quarantine kits, and what are we going to do with them? So I looked at our AASL standards, that's our American Association of School Library Standards, and I said, what can I do with the virtual realm? And so this is basically a two-slide PowerPoint, but I created my Bitmoji and a virtual library space. Everything in here is clickable, so since it's a PowerPoint, I put it into the Google Classroom. When the in-person students come in, they log onto the Google Classroom, they open the virtual library, and we usually begin by clicking on my computer for the lesson of the day. And so when that comes up, it's usually a NearPod lesson. This is awkward. It's usually a NearPod lesson that they can log into, and then it can either be self-paced or I can teach it live, either one. We go back to the virtual library when the lesson is finished, and I usually tell them to explore the virtual library, or I may have a specific highlight in there if we're highlighting biographies, and I may tell them to go to the history or the biographies icon and, you know, search for something. There's a DIY, which are projects specifically to be done at home, things they can do in their backyard, different badges they can earn. If they need to ask me a question, they click on my face, and that links to a tablet which they can type their question and get to me in response. No, I can't find my app. There's sports magazines. The Sports Illustrated Kids is attached to the sports balls at the bottom. They can go to PBS and play games with my dog. There's the Scholastic magazines, Scholastic Books. Interested in coding, they can go to code.org, and it will ask them for their key phrase, which is right there on the screen. If they click the books on the bookshelf, that links them to Epic, which I'm not sure it's going to work since it's after school hours. But during school hours, Epic is a digital library, and it's free for educators at this point. I don't know how long that's going to last because it is really amazing. But they can go and read all kinds of eBooks. I think there's 3,000, I think, different eBooks on there that are just free. They can search by title. They can do their summer reading through there. We've got our link to AR, the library catalog. I've got some little picture books up here, a link to NASA, National Geographic. I think I said the Beach Ball is something that I usually change for every month or every season. We had a Christmas tree up there, and we would, they would get to read what the holiday was all about and have some Christmas games. The Beach Ball is a link now in May to the Scholastic Summer Reading Home Base. So wherever they are, whatever they're doing, they can always get on my virtual library and still be connected with everything that's going on physically. But I'm going to continue that this next year, even though we are not quarantined. The teachers would come back and say, we'd love the virtual library that they're asking to get on it, you know, at the end of the lesson and all of that. So, thank you. Thank you for having me. That was my presentation.
So, do they have any questions or comments from Ms. Callis?
I don't know enough to ask her, but it's fantastic. I mean, it is what you're doing, and congratulations for the award, and it just sounds great. Sure does. Thanks.
How many kids at that age still like the physical book?
They all do, but they're, I'm kind of sworn because they're moving towards going on Epic whenever they get a chance to, because there's also quizzes on there too. And I may be stabbing myself in the foot, but they, they'll do those quizzes for a little bit, they are, just because it's, I guess it's convenience, you know, they finish the book, and then it's the quizzes right there, and then we can still count words and things like that.
So you guys still measure their AR points?
We measure their words.
Right. Because I know that used to be a very competitive race back years ago.
Right. Right. And we didn't, I didn't push it as much this year just because everything was so crazy.
Very good.
Well, the next thing we have tonight on our agenda is the incentive drawing for educators that completed the Tennessee Department of Education educator survey, which is an important survey for our district. It's important to get them to respond, and now we will incentivize those who did.
Thank you. Just a second. Yeah. We, and even today, I received an email from Kevin Schaaf, who works with the State Department of Ed, specifically addressing the educator survey. It is a partnership with Vanderbilt University, who sponsors this. It's a series of questions. It's always reflective of their instructional practices, how they engage with students, how much time do they spend for planning, how much time do they spend with recovery or remediation for the kids, advancing questions. It also asks about the social climate or the school climate based on the teacher's perspective. And I know in my recent conversations with administrators, they like to reflect on that and then begin to use that data source to guide them in their future professional development days with their teachers. If there's something that comes out that's really prevalent that they need to address based on their teacher's feedback, then that's the strongest evidence, and I'm taking what you said and putting it towards something to benefit you. In the years past, we have, you get, you get a district-level result with 45% or more. But in years past, we would have a request for everybody to reach the threshold of 75% or better. And last year, or year before last, when we did this last time, we had that 75% threshold. But this year, I upped it to 90% to see what the status would be. Every one of our schools, except for one, got above or at or above 90%, and then the lowest school got 86%. So we had a tremendous turnout from our teachers. It is a teacher-specific survey and administrators. It's not prepared prose, but it's questions specifically addressing the educator's role in the school and how they utilize what resources or programs that are available for their, you know, support of the student's learning. So we're very pleased with the results. I don't know if the lottery or the incentives help push that over that 90% threshold. I think it didn't hurt, but the state also, and I included that with the information that I included with your packet, this content that shows like on page two, they just started this. Now, we have not been notified if we have been received or we're going to receive any of these because these are by lottery also. So not everybody who gets that 90% threshold mark will qualify for that grant. It just means that you're up for those grants. You have to reach that threshold. But we are up for any of those because we surpassed that 90%. There's only two school districts in the state that are our size or bigger that have that much percentage, and that's Haywood County and Chester County. So we had a really good turnout in a state comparison. Of course, again, you got to think about it. Many of the schools are still not focusing a lot of attention on that because they're still trying to get going. But again, I'm very pleased with the results and the, well, Kevin Schaaf and his email today sent me just the first copy of all the results. I've got zip files that shows the results, and I have not disseminated anything yet, so I just received that this afternoon. But I'm looking forward to getting that sent to the principals so they can have a chance to review that and reflect on what the teachers are saying. And it's, again, there is no identifier. You don't, you don't know exactly who said what, so the teachers have freedom and hopefully a willingness to be very honest, transparent with their feelings and their thoughts because it's not until you get the truth out there in the open that you can begin to fix any or remedy any issues that you need to address. So I've got a list of, and again, this represents five of our six schools. So we have 150 educators that are included here that got this random sorter. So Stacy, or no, maybe, you don't have a highlighter, do you? I was hoping.
I was just going to write the number.
Okay, very good.
Then let Thomas know.
Okay. She was going to let Thomas know because we've got the 10. Oh, you've got it too. Okay, very good. So highlight it.
Highlight it.
Oh, very good. Because you've got a list of those names.
You won't wait to hear.
I'm just saying it would be, just to make sure that it didn't get missed, you know?
I was just going to let you know.
Well, you can just highlight it and save you some time. All right, so, and again, we're projecting this, so you know it's not just Norris's favorite 10. This is random sorting, okay? Now, again, 75 was already a number there. That's not the first winner, so I'm fixing to push the generate, okay? So our first number is 142. So 142.
Myra White.
Yeah. Myra White of West Chester. So we're doing 10, so that's the first one. Number two is, number 10.
Heather Bates.
Heather Bates, another West Chester. Uh-oh. Number three, 71.
Karen Kemp.
Karen Kemp.
Junior.
Number four is 148.
148.
48.
Amy Wood.
Amy Wood at Middle School. Number five is 114.
Carly Schmidt.
Carly Schmidt at Junior High. Number six is 51. Michael at West Chester. Number seven, am I right? Number seven, or is it six?
Michael was six.
Number seven, yeah. Michael was six.
Yes.
Number seven is 68.
Jason Judge.
Jason Judge at Middle School. Number eight, number 44.
Misty Elliott.
Misty Elliott at East Chester. Number nine is nine. Wow. Lauren Barker at East Chester. And the final one, and again, these 10 records, each one of these is going to receive a $50 Chamber Bucks package. Last one is number 49, Carissa Garner at Junior High. So again, pleased with the results. Again, for our overall results as a district, we had 94%, yeah, 94% completion rate. So that's, and Haywood County was at 95. So there were a couple of other schools that had a higher percentage, but they had like, their teacher population or their student population were extremely small. So you're talking about small school districts when it's really easy to get a high percentage if you can get everybody to do it. I'm pleased with the results.
Congratulations to those who won those packages. Moving on to our agenda tonight, the next thing we need to discuss and bring up, you have your packet, the first draft of the 2021-22 general purpose and federal program budget. So we'll need to approve that on the first reading, the first draft tonight, so.
And again, ladies and gentlemen, I did include with your packet, you had received a BEP Hold Harmless, which was passed by our state legislators and signed by the governor. And that was late in the, in their legislative season. But also included was a new copy of what would have happened to our state and local budget if that had not passed, and the reduction in those rates for all four of those components. Some of those are extremely significant. And what I was told by those that have spoken to state legislators is that Hold Harmless is not going to be year in and year out consistent. So this was just a one shot that we're going to have toward that Hold Harmless, which gives us, again, the Hold Harmless gives us a rate based on our 18, or excuse me, our 1920 student count. It doesn't take in consideration the current year student count, which is usually the one that predicates what your funding will be for the subsequent year. So we have been able to bypass that this current year, which based on our numbers is about 150 to 60 less than the previous year. And all but seven school districts in the state of Tennessee, and you have 147, all benefited from the Hold Harmless. So 140 of the 47, 147, all realized the same thing we did, a reduction in their student count. And again, that's where either they're doing other options for homeschool, virtual school, given the pandemic as what it is. So Stacy is here to add to any narrative, and please, reference to what you have in your packet. She does give us all that one pager on the, the first page, which gives you in that general purpose section, those, the bulleted items that are somewhat significant in the changes from the previous year.
Anybody have any questions or? Do we have a motion to approve the first draft of the 2021-22 general purpose and federal program? Our motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion or questions for Stacy here? All right, there is no questions or discussion. All those in favor of that approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. All right, next thing we'll go into is the recommendation for revision of board policy 4.206. You will have a copy of that in your packet. It's regarding homebound instruction, and I'm sure we'll discuss that a little bit.
Well, again, in, for the 21-22 year, our school districts have been given a, a different directive from the state to move away from what we've been accustomed to for this year for that continuous learning plan to be the driver of how we operate the school days based on whether it's a pandemic that's really impacting your school district. It added a lot of flexibility to allow distance learning and virtual school options without a lot of definite hoops to jump through. The state, again, is moving to more of a consistency of 180 days of physical presence school for the 21-22 year. And what they have shared with us just last week is that the state has opened up that opportunity for homebound to include those students who go quarantine without having to get a doctor's statement to justify. So it gives a little bit of opportunity without a family who gets, you know, contacted by the school nurse if we still have to deal somewhat with this pandemic next year, that if a child is a school contact and has to go home in a quarantine setting, that parent does not have to go to a doctor or physician to get them to sign off on a homebound service. We're not going to have, again, because of the reduction of the CLP or the Continuous Learning Plan, we're not going to have that option in the future. Those are for extreme emergency situations, that if there's something significant that the governor puts us in an emergency situation for schooling, then there will be an emergency setup for that Continuous Learning Plan. But it's not as it is right now. So the reason why we wanted to make sure that we had the right stability in our homebound service is because that's something that we can continue to do and have done for years. Couple of years ago, we did up the year, or excuse me, the days and the hours of service per week initially, and the state law currently still holds that it has to be at least a minimum of three hours per work week. But through the course of the years of providing homebound services for those students, for whatever medical reason is why they can't come to the physical setting, three hours was very limited to really truly get the learning necessary. It was more of just a, a trying to keep them from getting so far behind. So we upped that to say at least a minimum of 12 hours per week. It can go more, but we wanted to have that measure a little bit higher. And where in the past, we were sending somebody to the home to provide the instruction. Now we can continue to do it as what we have learned this year and do it in a distance learning format. So it provides us that stability of what we had with distance learning, taking advantage of the hardware that we have, as long as they have the internet service, or we can provide hotspots, provide them service if they don't have it. But they can have that opportunity to continue their learning without as much of a loss of time and effort with the other peers who are physically present. What we wanted to do on this one, and that's the revision here, is that the state law does allow the school district to determine what recertification period is followed, such as if a student on August 2 qualifies for homebound service every month or every 30 days of schooling, they, what I'm asking for is the board to approve a recertification every 30 days. So that if somebody is able to come back to school, then the doctor would allow them that comeback rather than the way it's written now. If a doctor signs off on them on August 2 and leaves it vague as far as a time to return to school, they can be out all year. And we know that remote learning from start to finish is detrimental to every child. It does not match with what happens in a physical setting each and every day. So we want to, we're not saying that the children cannot stay in a homebound setting. We want them to stay in that setting if that's the best place for them to be, but we want to make sure that the physicians and the families understand that every 30 school days, so that'd be every six weeks period when we do a new grading or reporting period, they'll have to have that recertification.
I've got a quick question. If the family doesn't have internet connection, hotspot, how do we handle that?
Well, we purchase hotspots. We have a purchase through the ESTRA funds that we have. We have a partnership with AT&amp;T right now, and then we've also partnered with, well, we're having a growing partnership with Aeneas to be able to afford some of that or could afford some of it. But there's also right now free service for anybody if they are of a low socioeconomic status and recognized for that. They can have almost free service with any of their providers as a possibility. But we have been purchasing hotspots this current year through AT&amp;T, and we're adding to that for next year.
If the person doesn't have access to a hotspot, do we?
Provide it to them.
Actually go to the home or not?
You mean with, for the instruction?
Yes.
No, no. We will still provide them, we will give them access to a hotspot. They won't be charged and never have been charged for hotspot.
So if their family has connections with a hotspot? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The hotspot serves as their connection.
Okay.
Yeah. Most of our phone service hotspots are could.
Got you.
But, but we do provide hotspots, so it's not, if they, not everybody has a data plan that's unlimited. So we're not asking them to put forth more billing toward the family. We're helping them meet that need by providing them a hotspot.
And Troy, during that 30-day period, it is going to remain at 12 hours per week?
Yes. 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 Now, they will have, depending on the school and the setting, such as the junior high who uses Summit Learning, students can log in more time than 30, or than 12 hours. But a minimum of 12 hours.
I make a motion that we adopt the revision as it's outlined in the agenda.
Our motion has been made and seconded, that we adopt the revision to board policy 4.206, which is in reference to homebound instruction. Is there any other discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so it's passed. All right, the next item we have is a recommendation, something we have to do each year, is approve the upcoming school year's tuition costs for out-of-county students.
And again, just like Shane said, we do this yearly, and based on where we are with our out-of-county, we are really benefiting with local tax dollars. There is no need, immediate need, to go up on any of the rates. Again, this number of 600 per student or 900 per family has been, and again, that's for the entire school year, that is in somewhat equivalent of what they would be, what our cut of the property tax would be. So it's kind of a comparison to that. So it'd be my recommendation that we keep our rates the same. We haven't gone up in rates in two or three years, and I don't see a need to go up any.
I make a motion to approve the same.
Okay. Say it. Our motion has been made and seconded, that we keep the rates the same for out-of-county students during the upcoming school year. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it is approved. We have a board approval, something also we have to do each year is accept the consolidated application, and all of, you explain that, what that's all about.
Again, each year, the federal dollar that we receive through IDEA and ESSA, or ESDA, that's the word that Randall Fenimore does each year in the budgeting for our federal Title I dollars and also our SBA dollars, there has to be a reflection in the board minutes that we are accepting that approval as a board or as an LEA for those funds to come in. We've already got the form signed. I gave you a copy of that form in your packet, but the copy that Shane and I have both signed is reflective of today's meeting date and will be given to Randall Fenimore for him to finalize this and upload this document to ePlan. It's another requirement. It's just a stipulation, but it's required each year.
I make a motion that we, I'm perfectly consulting the application.
Our motion has been made and seconded, that we do approve this application for this year. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved. Final thing we have tonight is just any updates or questions about updates from the, from the school system? Anybody have any questions, or anything you want to share from that?
Well, there have been some slight adjustments. Again, I would say for baseball and softball plumbing, I did witness from a distance. I did not go out to check on the baseball, but C3 was at the campus yesterday. I don't know exactly what the stint was, but it looked to be some equipment. And again, for the baseball, unlike the softball, the baseball has to have a pump to connect back to the, or sewage. So there is more extensive work on the baseball facility as compared to the softball, but they were there. they were there yesterday working on it. I'm not yet sure, I hadn't talked to Britt today about it, but I don't know as far as where they are exactly with their completion, but it's, it's been good days to work and they were working on it yesterday. And if you've seen, we've had some HVAC units purchased, some of those have been stored at the football stadium, just to give a safe place on campus where we can move those as needed. And we're just moving on quite well. It's going to be really good. We should see a positive reflection in our electric bills because again, we're seeing, we're replacing older units with more efficient units. So we should see a reflection in that adjustment. But I'm really pleased with where we've been able to purpose those dollars through Easter funds to get those purchased.
Any other questions or anything else needs to come before the board? All right, if there's nothing else, I'll share that our next meeting will be Thursday, June the 10th, here at the Chester County Board of Education Conference Room. So there's no other business to come. That's our motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
All right. We are.